I'm Susan Verdicchio. I serve as Chair. With me tonight are my colleagues Amy Shapiro, who serves as Vice Chair, Mariano Goluboff, Mike Bettencourt, and Rich Mucci. We have a packed agenda tonight. So I'm just gonna mention that our next meeting is August 23rd, and that'll be a regular session. And then the next meeting after that is Monday, September 13th. I think we're gonna skip reading the land acknowledgement. It's on the agenda. And I'd like to do, go right into, if Stacy Ward is here, I'd like to go into having her do her Controller's Report.
Hi, I'm here. Thanks. Yeah, this will be really brief. I was just wanted to give an update on where the turnbacks were after we had finished our FY fifteen, uh FY fifteen, yeah, sorry, the July 15th FY21 warrant. And we have some cleanup encumbrances that we posted. We still have a bunch of other cleanup entries to make. But in my email, I highlighted that right now, it looks like our turnbacks on the expenditure side are gonna be about three to 3.2 million-ish. I think the school department's still making some transfers and some changes. So that's great for us. We didn't use or tap into most of the COVID money that we voted at the Fall Town Meeting. So that's, that's good that we're getting that back. In the revenue side, we're about 2 million over on our estimated receipts, our total receipts, which includes about 570,000 of real estate and taxation. Let's see, 1.5 million in local receipts, and then just some, some from other areas, like transfers in from the SAFER grant. We got about 20 grand from the SAFER grant to cover some general fund benefits that they cover. So right now, that's sort of where we're at prior to closing and any of the final numbers. I don't know if anyone has any questions about that at all?
So total, we expect to be about 5 million over?
Yep.
Wow. That's really good. I mean, we're gonna be at, what, 16, 17% reserves then?
Um, that, yeah. I don't think it'll be that high when you look at the total revenue for the year. So it's based on the total revenue. So as the revenue increases-
Our revenue is up too.
Yeah, exactly. So I can't say exactly what that number will be, but I don't think it'll be quite that high, but it will be better. It'll be, it'll likely be over our rate, our percentage range.
And so this is kind of an unusual year. This is not, it's not usually this high, right?
Yeah, we estimated our local receipts quite low, just to prepare for what, what we were in store for, for COVID. We weren't really sure how the motor vehicle revenue excise was gonna come in. We weren't sure how our, like, building permits, trash disposals, all the other departmental revenue that comes in. We really lowballed it a bit this year, knowing that it could be a bad year. So we, we sort of prepared for the worst, hoping for the best. And what we did is we, we came in higher. We came in at 9.4 in our local receipt revenue, and compared to last year at 8.9. So we even beat what we collected in FY20. Although the last couple of months of FY20 were a little bit lower than we had, we had anticipated. But it's much better than we had expected and budgeted for. So it's, it's good that we were conservative, and now we can build up a little bit of the reserves. And we did use free cash to fund some of the COVID costs, so that'll replenish that. And hopefully, in FY22, we won't see any major hits on the COVID side. We have the ARPA money. We can still talk about, like, how we're gonna spend that in the future. And hopefully, COVID won't be that big of a problem for us, depending on how things pan out.
Yes, that's, that is an evolving situation. But it's, it's good to be financially secure and be in a strong position going into, going into the fall. Anybody else have any-
At the September, oh, sorry, at the September meeting, I'll have closed FY21 and have all my reports prepared for the DOR. So I'll do the final June report that has the general fund, enterprise funds, and some other funds, and a free cash summary, and reserve fund transfer summary. So it'll be a little bit more in-depth than the normal monthly ones, but that'll be their September meeting.
Yeah. Stacy, can we look at, it seems like the last couple of years, we've really under, and I don't know if this is just because of COVID, because FY21 was also done with COVID, but it seems like FY20 was also, we underestimated. And it's always better to be conservative and to end up with more, but at the same time, Town Meeting is making important decisions based on, on the estimates. And this year, they cut the school budget based on FinCom's presentation that the reserve fund was going to crater. And now we're seeing that it's actually the opposite, and we underestimated by almost $5 million when the schools were asking for about $120,000 more then. So I, I don't know if, if that's something that we can look at. Is, is that, has it gotten more where we are getting too conservative to, for Town Meeting to really be able to make appropriate decisions on, on the budget? So I, I don't know if there's any trends that-
I think when, when we're doing the budget planning, of course, 20 and 21 isn't really a good year to present or compare how the turnbacks have been budgeted and what the results are. Because we did stop spending. We only used, we only spent what we considered were, like, urgent. We had to spend in 20. So we did turn back way more than we thought we were going to because of the, just conservative budgeting. 21, we were very conservative. But in the past, as we go year to year, we wanna stretch out the override. And budgets are getting tighter and tighter. You expect to turn back less. So as we have tighter and tighter budget periods, you really can't expect every department to turn back as much as they've been turning backs in 20 and 21. I don't think that that's the trend. I think that it's an anomaly, really, to have two years in a row where we've had these results. Yeah, we have probably turned back more than the, I think the FinCom estimated $1 million this year, bumping it up from the 800, just because they had seen the slight increase then over the 800. So we usually only wanna, what we wanna do is only use what we think we're gonna earn in the turnbacks for, like, free cash usage for, for certain things. But I wouldn't use 21 or 20 as any sort of trend, because we just really approached the budget differently in both years. We really cut down on spending in year one of COVID, and we budgeted very conservatively on the revenue side in year two.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. So we have a license change on the docket here for 740. I wanna go ahead with that. This is for the Swanton Street Diner. Patty, have we got people?
Yes. Can I have, ask anyone who is part of this discussion to raise their hand, so I can move them in? Mariano, I, Mario, I have you. And- Yes. Mariano, is your lawyer here? Or Mario?
Mario, yeah. He said he briefly was gonna join us, but doesn't see his, like, he hasn't been connected yet.
Right. And is the name of your new manager, she also attending?
Yes.
Yes.
And what is her name?
Jennifer Demas-Forrest.
Okay, Jennifer. I do not, I do not see Jennifer. Oh, Jennifer, you with Mario?
Yes, yes, I am.
I'm searching for you. Okay, um, so Susan, both of the, Mario's here with Jennifer, so you can begin with them.
All right. So I understand that you're, you're changing a number of things here, the, the ownership, and the manager, and also the change, changing the category from wines and malt liquor to all alcohol.
Hello?
Oh, Mark O'Connor is the-
Yes. Yes, this is Attorney Mark O'Connor. I'm sorry, I, I guess I just didn't have the audio active.
Oh, well, we probably tricked you by not running late, so.
No, no, I've been listening. I'm very interested in the Controller's Report.
So please, please go ahead.
Yes, very simply, as, as most of you probably know, Swanton Street Diner has been in operation in Winchester since 2006. And it's operated successfully there and without incident with respect to the current beer and wine license that it holds. The application before you is asking for an expansion of that license to an all alcohol license. That's the, the primary goal of the application. And the issues would be with respect to changing the manager to take out basically Valerie Navarro and replace her with Mario's daughter, Jennifer, who, who you see online. So that is, that's the proposal.
And it seems that Jennifer's been working at the restaurant for a while?
I understand about three years, yeah. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Yes, I have for three years now.
Thank you. But does anyone on the, the board have any questions? No one? I mean, it's, it's, it's true that Swanton Street Diner has been in operation for a long time, or very much a known quantity.
I have, I don't have a question. I, I have a comment. Swanton Street Diner is one of the few establishments that are outside of the town center itself. It serves a neighborhood within walking distance of so many residential units. All of the neighbors in that area that I've talked to just sing the praises of, of having a place that they can walk to right there. And Swanton Street Diner serves great food, and I'm completely in favor of this. And I just wanna thank them for the support of the town and for operating a restaurant of high quality for this long in town. And I know the past year has been really tough on restaurants with the pandemic, which mostly spreads indoors. And just, I hope that the change from beer and wine to all alcohol helps them to be able to survive and to thrive in Winchester for many years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? So I just wanna be sure that this would be one, one motion to approve all the changes?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So I move that we approve change of category for the Swanton Street Diner liquor license from wines and malt to all alcohol, as well as the manager and ownership.
Second.
And I guess that we'll move right into a vote. Roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll see you there soon.
Right. So I wanna go back up and just catch the, the, let's do the donations and the Town Manager, the Town Manager's Report then, if we could do that, please?
I move that we accept a donation with gratitude of $1,000 from Winchester Hospital Leahy Health to the Health Department for the TIC program.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I move that we accept a donation of $1,000 from the Winchester Cooperative Bank to the Recreation Department for the 2021 Summer Concerts on the Common.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
And I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $3,000 from Winchester Hospital to the Council on Aging to develop a mobile clinic for cholesterol and anemia testing for low-income Winchester residents.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Those are great. Thank you. Lisa, do you have your report ready?
Sure. So I have three parts. I'm gonna go through the appointments first. Then I have a sort of a pass-through report from Jennifer Murphy, the Health Director, and then I also have my own report. So just preparing you for that. So going through the appointments, there is one that is not actually listed on the agenda, but there's no action actually required by the board. This is in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter. I've made the following permanent full-time appointment in the Controller's Office to Elizabeth Campbell, to Accounting Specialist. So again, no action needed by the board. All the rest do require a waiving of the 15-day appointment period. So first, in the Police Department, I have two promotions to Lieutenant of Edward Donahue and Frank Lumincelli. And again, I'm asking for the board to waive the 15-day period.
I move that we, I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Edward Donahue and Frank Lumincelli for Police Department promotion to Lieutenant.
Second.
Sorry, I muted myself that time. A roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
All right, the second one is the promotion of Kenneth Sturgeon to Police Department Chief Dispatcher.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Kenneth Sturgeon for the role of Police Department Chief Dispatcher.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
There are three regular full-time appointments in the Department of Public Works School Custodians to Joe O'Brien, sorry, Joseph O'Brien to a SC8 Custodian 2, Adam Hiscock to SC10 Custodian 4, and Seth Parsons to SC15 Custodian 9, requesting to waive the 15-day customary waiting period.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Joseph O'Brien, Adam Hiscock, and Seth Parsons Custodians in the DPW.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
And last is a regular full-time appointment in the Recreation Department, Principal Clerk of Caitlin Verutseus.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Caitlin Verutseus for Recre, for the Recreation Department, position of Principal Clerk 1.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Great, thank you. The Health Department is going to be resuming weekly updates of the data dashboard starting today, given a recent uptick in cases. As of today, the data shows that there are 26 active cases. And if my memory is correct, I believe this is up from five in the past several weeks, 14 due to an outbreak at the Winchester daycare facility. The Delta variant is highly transmissible and is circulated widely in the state. The Winchester Health Department is seeing infections in fully vaccinated residents. The vaccine on the whole, however, is preventing severe illness, hospitalizations, and death. The Health Department continues case follow-up and contact tracing efforts to limit the spread. For prevention, the vaccine continues to be widely available. 85% of eligible Winchester residents are fully vaccinated, but they encourage those who have not yet to be vaccinated to do so now. All age-eligible people are encouraged to get vaccinated, especially those who will be attending school in September. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health has issued a public health advisory effective July 30th that advises that all unvaccinated residents continue to wear masks in indoor settings and when they cannot socially distance. The advisory also recommends that vaccinated residents who are at increased risk of COVID-19 or who live with someone at increased risk should wear a face covering indoors other than in their homes. And everyone should consider masking up while indoors in public places. I believe we've also invited her to speak at the, the 23rd. So I, I'm not sure if that's been confirmed, but there is also a Board of Health meeting next Monday, the 9th, at 5 o'clock. I believe that's virtual as well. And, and I think there'll be some more COVID updates there as well.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? Okay. All right, moving on to the regular update. For the sustainability director positions, there were 17 applications received. Looks like some good ones. The screening committee is scoring the applications right now. It's comprised of two members of the Climate Action Advisory Committee, one representative each of the Planning Board, Conservation Committee, and Board of Health, also being supported by staff from the Planning and Town Managers Departments. And there'll be an initial meeting in mid-August. The Waterfield lot, we'll be discussing that later tonight, so we'll get into that then. But this is requesting quotes for the financial consultant. You'll also be talking about project updates, so let me know if you have any questions on these. This document will be posted online on the Select Board page. The MBTA project, the commuter rail project, went out to bid on June 23rd, and the bid close date will be August 12th. So hopefully, I'll have some updates for you at the next meeting. And this is the mask advisory that was also in Jen's report. And Fall Town Meeting is scheduled to start on Monday, November 1st, and we will close the warrant on Friday, September 10th.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions? Thank you, Lisa. Oh, cool.
Susan, just if I could, just, Lisa, I appreciate the information, especially about COVID. Obviously, you know, we were at five cases, I think, last week. We saw our stock rise. We saw daycare centers shut down for the week that I know is affecting families. And I think you're starting to hear some angst among, at least, parents and what the school year will look like. And I know, you know, we've done a tremendous job, you know, your Board of Health, School Committee, and everyone in the School Department, you know, over the last several months, getting the kids back. And here we are again, you know, with, with COVID on, on the doorstep. So, you know, certainly great to hear that everyone's getting vaccinated, that, that can. You know, I just think from a communication standpoint, we should really start, you know, ramping these back up again. I think there's a lot of angst with the COVID for the fall and, and schools starting, and then also just traffic-wise. I know Beth's here tonight to present, but just people are starting to get concerned of seeing all the construction out there and, and, you know, how, how the school year is gonna work. So certainly appreciate the update from Jen. Great to hear. She'll be at our meeting on the 23rd, I think. And if, if in the meantime, if we can really start to, to ramp up those communications, I think it would start putting people at ease and, and, you know, know that we're, we're still on top of this as, as, you know, the town has been since the start of it. So thank you.
Right. Thanks, Rich. So I wanted to keep going, and I'm gonna, I see some people are here to be, for appointments. I don't want people who wanna volunteer to serve the town to have to wait until late in the evening. So I, I think I'd like, at this point, to go ahead with the appointments for the Affordable Housing Trust. And if the gentleman is here for the Board of Appeals as well. But let's move right into the Affordable Housing Trust. There's a, this is a new, a relatively new town body, and we have an appointee who's willing to serve on that named Chris Galetta. And we heard from him at a previous meeting. So I, I think we, we know a lot about Chris. Chris, welcome again. Does anyone on, on the board have any further questions for, for Chris Galetta? So seeing, being done, I think we should go ahead and, and appoint Chris, if I can have a motion to that, to that effect, please.
Sure. I move that we appoint Christopher Galetta to a position on the Affordable Housing Trust with a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And I actually, I'm not sure I see the gentleman who's applying for the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, he's a Zoom, the Zoom user. You can, can you see his picture?
Oh.
Hey, Jack, can you on?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Susan, just before we move on, I just wanted to say thank you to Chris for, for being here.
Yes.
For volunteering.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to the opportunity to help.
Thanks, Chris. Should've said that. So moving along, Jack, you're willing to serve on the Board of Appeals, and I think you are, you're not new to the town or volunteering to the town. Do you wanna give us an idea of why you would like to be on the zoning Board of Appeals, please?
I like volunteering. Had a lot of free time past year. It just was always something that, that I found interesting, how the, the town works with the permitting process and the stuff that people go through. I've been the owner of Constable's Office for 22 years, working in the, in the system. And I, I think I could offer, I'm, I'm, I'm not a, I, I've never done it before, but I, but I, I think I, I have enough wits that I can handle it. I've, I've been on the Personnel Board. I've, I've enjoyed it. I try to make myself available as best I can. And that's pretty much it.
Right. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. What on the board have any questions? This is certainly, certainly a position we need very, very much, because they're, they're a very busy Board of Appeals. And it's, it's a very important role, you know, very important body town. There's a lot of building going on. So really appreciate you being willing to jump on board.
Thank you. Thank you. We're willing to do so.
Oh, is there a question? I'm sorry, I don't...
Can I just ask, just sorry, Susan, just, Jack, thank you for putting your name forward. I appreciate it. Any experience with zoning or construction or real estate?
At one, I have owned my own real estate. I currently have some property that I manage in Woburn, where my office is located. And I did, I owned a trucking company for eight years. So I think I'm versed enough to handle it. I can't, did I get through? I don't know if I'm doing this, I don't know if I'm doing this thing right. I always seem, I always seem to mess it up, so.
You're not alone, and I feel, I've been doing this for a year now, so a little tricky. You are coming through it.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Did I, did I answer the question?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Motion to appoint to the Board of Appeals.
So I move that we appoint Jack Sula to the Board of Appeals for a term to expire March 31st, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your vote of confidence.
Thank, thank you for volunteering.
No problem. Have a good evening, everybody.
So I think we will now move into the appointments for the Waterfield Task Force. We have Paul Manganaro representing Citizens for a Better Waterfield, and Stephanie Zeremba representing the Committee for Waterfield Facts.
Susan, we, real quick, we had two other committee and commission appointments. I don't know if you wanted to just do those as refer incumbents.
All right, we could do those real quick.
It's up to you. I just...
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. I won't forget, but go ahead.
I move that we appoint Brian Flaherty to the Audit Advisory Committee for a term to expire August 1st, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
And I move that we appoint Michael Bouvet, Michael Kreen, and Alex Di Matteo to the Field Management Committee with a term to expire July 1st, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So thank you, Amy. So if we could have Mr. Manganaro and Ms. Zeremba elevated.
They're all set.
Yep, I see you. Thank you. Good evening to you both. You have both been, or each been nominated by your respective committees. So I, you know, it's not like we have to do a lot of question, question and answer and review here. But if you'd like to just introduce yourself and let us know what your approach is going to be on the task force, and just so the public can hear from you, that'd be really great. All since I, why don't you go ahead?
You'd like me to go first? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I look forward to contributing to this task force. I believe my 40 years of building relationships in town through loyalty, trust, and compromise will serve, serve myself well and this committee well. I know the three members that have already been selected have diverse backgrounds, and I'd be excited to work with them and as well with Stephanie. Stephanie and I have always had, already had some conversations before this task force was formed. So I look forward to the opportunity. I bring some real estate business background. I also have worked in a joint venture with the town where, when I was the president of the Winchester Field Development Council, and that was a public-private venture where we, the public side raised over $1 million for major assets in town, and it was very successful. And it was, it was a process that took compromise, patience, and understanding, and I look forward to bringing that to this task force also.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Manganaro? All right, why don't we just go ahead and be looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Manganaro to the task force?
So I move that we appoint Paul Manganaro to the Waterfield Task Force.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we'll turn to Stephanie Zeremba. Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you for having myself and for having Paul on and accommodating us both for schedules and apologies that I wasn't able to join the rest of the conversation last week. So as I think all of you know, I was highly involved in the campaign for the yes vote for the Waterfield Development. I have lived in Winchester for about three years now, a town meeting member, and feel very passionately about our need to continue to address affordable housing needs as well as to increase diversity on a number of levels within our town. In my non-Winchester resident in my professional life, I lobbied at the federal level for many years on behalf of a private corporation. I'm a lawyer by training, and so I've done a lot of work in the past, working with coalitions, working with tasks for, task forces and working groups during heated debates on policy issues and have a lot of experience working, working through those and coming to compromise. So I'm glad to see this task force being formed. You know, I will just say that maintaining the highest level of affordable units as we can, that is the number one priority for the folks that are in the Committee for Waterfield Facts. So that's going to be the perspective that I will be bringing and really prioritizing as we get into these conversations. And I think we, we certainly, in my conversations with, with all sorts, various folks, I think the town is pretty unified in wanting to prioritize that. So I'm hopeful that we'll have good consensus on that prioritization.
Great, thank you, and thank you for volunteering.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions for Stephanie? And seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Stephanie Zeremba to the Waterfield Task Force.
Move that we appoint Stephanie Zeremba to the Waterfield Task Force.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. And you'll be hearing from the town manager, I think, very soon with some more details about scheduling and, you know, introductory materials. And we really look forward to this task force getting underway, and we're really grateful that everyone is willing to serve on it. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks, Steph. So I know I'm skipping around here. I need to go back up towards the top of our business agenda. I know that Beth Rudolph is here to talk about stormwater regulations. Let's turn to that, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you for joining us, Steph, and thanks for your patience.
Jess Wall from Anderson Cracker and Jerry Schwartz from Western San Antonio. And if it's okay, Patty, I'm going to share my screen and walk through the presentation. I'm unable to share screen.
We're kind of hearing a lot of interferences happening. So if people could meet themselves if they're not talking, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can everyone see the PowerPoint I have here?
I can, but there's a lot of background noise.
Okay. When I talk, there's a lot of noise?
Yeah, Beth, it seems like it's coming from your, your phone.
Oh, I'm just talking with my headphones. I'm sure I'm in my office, so if there's any...
That's better.
It's better now.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's a mystery. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so everyone can see the presentation, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we're here to talk about updates to the town's existing regulations regarding the use of public stores and storm drains. Just to give some background, these existing regulations were adopted in June 2007, and they existed prior to that. We just made some updates to the regulations in 2007 as a result of the previous MS4. Our proposed updates will bring the regulations in compliance with the new, the current MS4 permit requirement. And we're also looking to expand the requirements for, by right construction projects. So those are projects that are required just a building permit. That piece is not required by the MS4, but it's something that we're considering now. So most of the conversation I'm going to have tonight is about the stormwater section of the regulations. The section on sanitary sewer regulations, it's pretty much unchanged from existing regulations. So just a little, a bit of background on the EPA MS4 permit. This permit became effective on July 1st, 2018. We just finished up year three of the permit, that's the five-year permit total. This is the second five-year permit that EPA has issued for the MS4 permit from municipalities. I expect that they'll be issued after this one. The permit is authorized at municipalities to discharge stormwater, collect our stormwater system to waters that we use. So it's required for us to comply with MS4 regulations in order for us to have outfalls into any of those given water bodies. The regulations are focused primarily on developing and implementing best management practices that will reduce the discharge of pollutants from the MS4. The permit is broken down into what they call six minimum control measures, including a post-construction runoff control. And that's really the one that these regulations, updates are focused on. So the objective is to reduce the discharge of pollutants found in stormwater through retention or treatment of stormwater runoff after construction on new and redevelopment sites. In addition to the MS4 requirements, as I noted, we have added a category into the regulations for what we call small development projects. So the purpose of these new regulate, this additional regulation is to require runoff from buy-right projects. So those are projects that require just building permits that results in an increase of 250 square feet or more new area. Pavement, patio, building footprint, that's what we would consider. Property owners, in order to meet this requirement, we need to consider installing filtration systems, rain gardens, or you can also look at modifying the site to balance the surface area by removing existing. There's other communities in Massachusetts that have similar regulations. Arlington being one, they have a trigger of 350 square feet of new surface area. Newton being another that has a trigger of 400 suite, where a feed of new surface area. We settled on the 250 square feet as our recommendation. That's currently what we've been using for projects that have to go through the DPA Planning for Conservation Commission as a trigger. Those projects have to mitigate for their stormwater runoff. And we felt like that, although it's a relatively small area, when you think of the significant investment that town has made in our flood mitigation projects around town, it seems important because every additional drop of water that runs off somebody's property and runs into our waterways, river, lakes, then it results in potential flooding of downstream. So whereas the MS4 permit is really focused on water quality improvements of the stormwater runoff, this, this proposed for small development project requirement is based mostly, based more on reducing water quantity. So the proposed definitions, these broke down into two categories. The MS4 permit definition specifically call out new development projects and redevelopment projects. So new development is defined as any construction activities or land alteration resulting in total or损损损 equal to or greater than one acre or part of a larger project that disturbs an acre on an area that has not been previously developed. That new development is basically a pristine site that has no development on it, and you're going to go and structure new projects. They also define requirements for redevelopment projects, where those are defined as any construction, land alteration, or improvement of a previous surfaces resulting in total or损损损 equal to or greater than one acre, or as part of a larger plan that does not meet the definition of redevelopment. So that is the, those are the definitions for the MS4 specific related requirements. And then, as I noted, we have this definition that we created for small development projects, which means any construction activities and land alteration that, sorry, I keep using this, my person bar to cover parts of the presentation of them being. So small development means any construction activities or land alteration that requires a building permit and results in an increase of 250 square feet or more of a surface. So just quickly stepping through the requirements for all projects. So this includes new development, redevelopment, and a small development project. So all projects are required to consider the use of low-impact development in their site planning and design. The design of stormwater management must be consistent with or more stringent than the 2008 Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. And this, this third item is one that is in the existing regulations, but we're expanding it to cover these small development projects. So post-construction discharge rates and runoff volumes cannot exceed redevelopment value. We specified the rainfall data that we want engineers to use during the analysis. So that's what we call the Cornell number. Applicants are required to submit an erosion control permit to plans. That's to making sure that develops, sets up around the perimeter of a site, make sure there's no runoff off-site. Applicants are required to submit as-built drawings and engineering certifications at construction, and then ensuring that there's adequate long-term operation maintenance of this stormwater. Now, this next section talks just about the MS4 requirements for new development projects. And this is a little bit wordy and a little bit confusing, so I'm going to read directly. This language is just from the MS4 permit. The new development project shall be designed to meet an average annual removal of 90% of the average annual load of pollution credit solids related to the post-construction of previous area, and 60% of the average annual load of phosphorus related to total construction in previous surface. So that is, I know, kind of a mouthful. There are, the regulations include directives as to how to meet this requirement, and those are included in our draft regulations. And this, again, is just a requirement for projects that are over, over one year. And it's focused primarily on the water quality. There's similar language for redevelopment projects. I'm not going to read this, but you can just see. Whereas the new developments have a higher standard of 90% for the TSS removal, they're 80% for redevelopment, and 50% for... It's a similar, similar vein as for new developments, just a little bit less stringent with water quality. So just in terms of application process, we, we've been working on these regulations for close to a year. We've talked about different ways that we think would make sense to try to administer them. And we agreed that I think the easiest thing is to not create any new permit processes, but to use the existing processes that we have. So for projects that require approval from the DPA... So for projects that require approval from the ZBIA, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, the Engineering Department already reviews those projects and provides comments to support committees. And this, ensuring compliance with these regulations, if they're adopted, will just become part of our review process. So it's very similar to the current. For by right projects, and this is the new piece for those small development projects, the information will be provided as part of the building permit application. And then we, as Engineering Department, get that and review it prior to issues. So next steps, again, as I said, we've been working on these regulations with Anderson Craigor and Wes Anderson, who are the board of the past year. We have circulated a draft of these regulations to the members of the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, the ZBIA, and town staff. So before we got to the board, we've already gotten some feedback from folks around town. The next step that we request is to issue these regulations, draft regulations for public comment. I'd suggest we do it for a three-week period, so if that's we start putting it up on the website on Wednesday, August 4th, and then have any comments back to me by August 25th. Come back to the select board on September 13th to discuss the public comments and any associated edits. And the real key here is that we have to have at least the MS4 part of the regulations approved. Ideally, all the regulations, all the entire set of regulations approved before our in-force is due to EPA September. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, I know there's a lot of implications here in the regulations. Although there are some existing regulations, it is, it is significant change that we've had out there, so I'm happy to take any questions we have.
Thank you, Beth. So this is part of a federal permit that we have to comply with, and we have to update our regulations, and we have to put them out for public comment. So thank you for all this work on this update and working with council and so forth. Does anyone on the board have a question for Beth or council on these, on these proposed regulations?
Yeah, I have a quick question, Beth. I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding this, but is there an impact that will be felt by developers, builders, homeowners in terms of the new lot regulations?
Yeah, so currently, if you are, if you have to go before the ZBIA, the Planning Board, or the Conservation Commission, you are required to meet that form of mitigation where you have to match the pre and post-development both in terms of rate and volume. So in order to do that, you have to hire an engineer, construction and filtration system, rain garden. In some cases, folks are able to remove other impervious surfaces on their site to balance that out. So you might be, a lot of times we see folks that are, you know, expanding the footprint of their house over an existing patio, right? So you're replacing one impervious surface with another. So in this case, what we proposed is to drop that down. So it's not just for development that has to seek relief from the ZBIA, the Planning Board, or the Conservation Commission, also for by right projects. So just those projects that have to, are to have to go and get a building permit. So that, really what we've seen is there's a lot of projects that so far, under our existing regulations, have slipped under the radar, right? So we might have a new single-family home that's being constructed that is required to know, if it's a by right project, it needs all the zoning, it needs all the setbacks. They are not required to do any sort of form of water. So we could have an empty lot that then has, you know, 5,000 square feet of impervious area that has no occupation at all. So those are the projects that we're really trying to capture. As I mentioned, we did set the trigger at 250 square feet. So if somebody who is doing an addition on their property may trigger that requirement at the 250 square feet. And I'm certainly open to comment from the board or for others during the public comment period if we want to discuss whether it should be, that trigger should be 250 square feet or we want to bump it up to a higher number. We picked the 250 square feet because that's what we currently use for the projects that go before the ZBIA. And so we thought just for consistency, but there, you know, as I mentioned, Arlington has a trigger of 350 square feet, Newton has a trigger of 400 square feet. So certainly that's something that we're open to discussion on, whether that's... But yes, folks who are, who are doing work on their homes and have to get a building permit and add new impervious area greater than 250 square feet or whatever number we settle on, will have additional requirements beyond.
Would permeable pavers or concrete or what, I know it's a brand name, but TrueGrid, would that, would a homeowner be able to use that to offset?
Yep, yeah, so there is, permeable pavers don't have the same permeability factor as like grass. So you might have to, you know, additional work to be done in that sort of instance, but absolutely, that's definitely the type of thing that...
So how would we calculate, you know, 250 square feet? We're talking about going from grass to 100% impervious, right? What if somebody were to do permeable pavers or TrueGrid? Are we looking at a percentage of permeability or how do we calculate?
Right, so it's, it's this... So it's item three here. You're required to match the post-development discharge rate and volume of runoff at the property line. So typically, here we're doing an analysis to show that you're adding, you know, 1,000 square feet of impervious area, and we've offset it by a combination of filtration system, removing patio, adding rain garden. You know, so there's, those are the types of things that we could look at and, you know, could be worked for. We had a paved driveway, we're making it a permeable surface instead. So those are the types of things that we use to mitigate that.
Okay, thank you.
Beth, potentially this could add costs to a small project that a homeowner is doing by right. I can appreciate the 250 square feet. I'd be interested to hear what other communities, I know you referenced Arlington and Newton, and possibly our engineer firm that we fired, what their thoughts on that? If it's, you know, what they typically see in this situation, if it's 400 or 350 or even higher than that. You know, I just, I, you know, I just don't want to burden a homeowner who's doing a project by right. And I understand, I appreciate the, you know, why we're doing this, certainly, but yeah, I'm just concerned about that 250 square foot number and be interested to hear what other board members thought and the public comment, too.
Yeah, so that's absolutely, I think we're, we've got this conversation to go, right? So that, that 250 number is definitely up for conversation, you're right, it will add, it will add costs to any work, site work that is present. So Arlington and Newton are the two kind of things that come to my top of mind for me. I think Newton has had their, they've referenced it here for a long time, hoping to do something similar in Winchester. And I'd be happy to work with Wes to see if we can find...
Thank you.
Yeah, this, this is Susan, I would, I would support looking at that number because it does seem to be more stringent than the two communities that you're comparing it to. And maybe we should think about making it more comparable. Anyone else? So Beth, you're looking for us to issue the regulations? Is that the operative word?
No, I think we're, we're looking to issue them for public comment. So like suggested here, this August 4th to 25th, maybe days to get it up on the website.
And then you would take care of that as far as putting them up on the website and...
Yeah, yeah, I'll work with them.
Okay.
And then we can, you know, we'll have some time to process any comments that we get, and we'll come back to people.
Just Beth, in terms of just putting them up on the website, is there any other way we communicate this out to the public so that they know that these are up there, social media or...
Yeah, yeah, I can work with Dan Kepel. I'll do the same thing we did earlier this year and I'll recirculate it to various boards and communities.
Great, thank you.
Yep, that's a good idea.
So do, Susan, do you need a motion?
Yeah, I guess we're ready for a motion, yes.
Okay, so I move that we approve Town Engineer to issue the draft regulations for public comment for the MS4 permit requirements.
Again.
We'll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, thank you, Beth. Do you want to go right into your construction projects update?
Sure, yep, let me... So this is the memo that went into the board packet for this evening. As Rich mentioned earlier in the meeting, there are a lot of construction projects going on in Winchester this summer. Like we all do, this is going to be a particularly busy construction season. So the first two are EverSource related, the EverSource 150 project. They are continuing construction, this is the same project that started last summer through the Woodside, Wildwood area. Work is currently ongoing on Bacon Street, at the intersection of Bacon and Fletcher Street. They're hoping to be out of the intersection by the end of August, and if not, we've discussed with them the need to submit other work to be for the, and that intersection. They'll also be working through the fall on operations at the Budger Station. So they're just seeing if they, a hole in the, in the ground at the Budger Station. They have been, they started operations last year to do tunneling work, to install the pipe under the railroad tracks. And they're going to issue, really for the past year, figure out how to best construct that, and now that they're actually starting that work. Groundwater. They're also going to be wrapping up work on Main Street in this corner. And they expect to be working in the, through at least next spring, I would say, likely. Do you want me to, Susan, do you want me to take comments or questions on each one as I go along or wait until the end?
Um, why don't we just go through all of them and people can ask questions afterwards?
Okay, so the next one is EverSource 335 project. So that project started work on Washington Street and they're headed south. So they're currently in the vicinity of 21, 223. They will be jumping over the bridge there, over the crossing, and just getting down Washington Street this fall. They're still working on the details of the deck of bore operation at Washington Street Bridge to tunnel their pipe underneath the river, hoping to do that this fall. But we still have ways to go in terms of people that work. For, per the MOU that the town signed with EverSource, they are not allowed to work on Cross Street and also on Street. So they're workally limited to Washington Street. EverSource has not provided us with an overall project schedule, but it's expected to be out there at least through next summer probably. The next project is an exciting one, so this is a Saver's School project at the Vincenton School. This project was designed and it's being started and managed by Massiot. That's a grant, a grant, a grant that's known to the state. Work is currently ongoing on Punch-on-Street at the school. Obviously, this is an area that, given all the school and special interest in it. I did speak with Massiot last week, they, their contractor expects to have all the sidewalk curving work done at the corner closest to Vincenton School, so east side, northeast side of the, of the intersection. They will still be working at the other three corners on sidewalk and curving work this fall. And they don't expect to install the new traffic signals. Next project is Swan Street Bridge, so the bridge is currently closed. That project is moving forward, but has been delayed due to the weather we've had this month. The road was originally supposed to be opened in 2015, but the contractor has an extension, which is currently being reviewed. That, the, here on the project as well as... There are also various DPW road sidewalk projects and also national grade work. I don't have all the specifics on that work, I know national grade is out of the working in the, in the road area. A lot of their work is also related to that work. And next, our upcoming project. So the big one that we're working to get out the bid right now is the intersection improvement for the street and park road. Expect to do it this August and hope to start construction as soon as it can, but likely to be late September or early October. I don't know if I can get the contract. Next one, we were just here a couple of weeks ago talking about it, is the Wildwood tree improvements, schools working towards developing final plan and bid documents. And once those are, once the plans are settled, we'll evaluate whether we have the time to do this part of the fall. And then item three, another big one coming down the site, that's been working for years, is the reconstruction of the Lake Street Bridge. So that's the one right outside of DPW. We are still working, waiting on our 91 license, because it's a frame that we use. Big project we have going on. And the permit, as it is noted here, is unpredictable and has a very long lifespan. Hoping to get that here at the meeting, expect construction in late, one or early 2022. Just a reminder there that the bridge will be closed next year in the bridge. I think that's it for now. Make sure to make any adjustments on this list.
Right, does anyone have any questions for Beth? Beth, thank you for doing this.
Susan, if I could?
Yes.
Thank you, Beth, I appreciate the update, you know, very thorough. Certainly a lot going on in town. One thing that's on here is obviously the MBTA project as well. It looks like, I thought Lisa said in her report that that's going out to bid in August, so probably a fall start date as well. I'm very concerned that this is our first real test since, you know, we've started a lot of these projects. You know, we kind of got lucky with the pandemic and people being home. And certainly, you know, we're going to have a lot of activity at Wedgemere, I think, as people maybe start heading back to work. And, you know, the school's all starting around the 8:30 timeframe. So what are we doing and what is the plan? And Lisa, feel free to jump in as well, in terms of communication, you know, so that people know the best ways to get places. And also, I know we use color maps when we did the Swan Street Bridge that we handed out, the transfer station. You know, maybe colored maps of where, you know, the EverSource project is working so that people can, can plan their routes to the various schools, whether they're walking, riding, or taking a car, or even the buses. You know, I think this is our first big test and just curious what our plans are for that.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I don't think we've put together a formal plan just yet, but happy to take that in the board. Obviously, for the Saver's School project, the VO, probably the best force of action there is to get some email blasts out to the school department right before school starts, maybe this time of summer, I do that. Where they'll be, and then I'm happy to work with the town mayor's office and faculty, you know, put together updates for the rest of the project as we get towards, you know, the end of August. Website, the media.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, maybe for Lisa more than Beth, you know, certainly... You know, certainly, I think now is the time to start planning an aggressive campaign because this is, you know, it's bad on a normal day when we had all this construction and everyone trying to get to their locations at, at one time. Especially with the train station being closed now, Wedgemere, you know, being under construction, limited parking over there. You know, I think it's, it's best that we start getting ahead of this because schools is less than a month away at this point, so.
Yeah, Rich, I'll just add that I think the variety of methods that Beth already alluded to, working with the school department, maps at the transfer station, other places that people go using social media, the website, utilizing electronic signage. Certainly, if there's any events that are coming up, you know, we can use those as well to start letting folks know when things are happening. And we'll continue to encourage people to sign up for alerts on our website because when we, we start posting things there, especially as they, as they come up, then folks will get those automatic reminders as well. So we'll, we'll employ a variety of methods.
So, sorry, one more before I go, Susan. I think at our August 23rd meeting, since we're, you know, it's so close to the start of school, if we could have just a, just an update on that plan, I think it would be really helpful just to see what we have out to the community and what we may need to tweak or anything.
Okay, I think that's sensible.
Thank you.
And, and I, and I know that the town manager is in communication with superintendent as well. And, you know, we, we do typically try to make sure that the schools are aware of various changes, especially things like Swan Street or, you know, where EverSource is going to be closing roads and might not be passable to buses or they might want, might need to reroute buses. That's, that's a biggie. So why don't we keep going, going here, Beth, and move into the, the traffic review committee recommendations? I just want to say as a kind of an intro to that, that this is something that kind of got put on the back burner. So we have kind of a backlog and a long list. These are smaller changes that have been through the traffic and transportation review committee and also through the, the next layer up with, with town staff, the traffic review committee. And now they have taken a position and have recommendations for the board to, to implement. And there, there are a number of them, but, you know, throughout the town, sprinkled around town. And Beth is going to go through them and, and we'll vote or, or we'll discuss and, and vote or, you know, follow their recommendations or not.
Yeah, so this is the first of two nights of me being, before I had to talk through some of these.
Yep.
As Susan said, there's a bit of backlog though. Well, three days and get some of them cleaned up. And then the actions are either no action, potentially a vote of the board immediately or in many cases, it's a public hearing. So the, the first one here, and some of these I've just noted because there are areas where we're doing projects anyway. So it just was some credits to the fact that there are concerns in these neighborhoods. And this is, this is one of them. So this was a, a resident expressed concern about the volume and speed of traffic on Park Avenue at the corner of Highland Ave. As you all may recall, we did a four door study with school in 2019 out there. And we're in the process of implementing improvements. The town did fund the design of median islands along Highland Ave at the fall 2020 town meeting. And we are hoping to get the construction funding of that in this, this next capital cycle. So that's one of the projects that could help with some of the speed issues we've seen out here. That's going to be.
Beth, if I could just make a quick comment on that. That was, I understand that this larger project is on the horizon. This request did come in a few years ago and I, I live near there. And I, I think what happened was the DPW painted a nice big, you know, stop. The word stop on the pavement right at that corner, and that seemed to really help. And that was a few years ago.
Yeah.
Stop, that stop paint is wearing off. And I think if we could get on the list to have that done, you know, before school starts, that would, that would be excellent.
So that's at the top of Park.
Yes, at the top of Park by Highland. People don't necessarily stop at the stops and they sort of extend out closer into Highland just so they can see. And that's, it's a little dangerous if you're a pedestrian. Thank you.
Okay, so the next one was at the corner of Norwood Street and Kirk Street. And I'm, I'm happy to also put Google Maps if it is helpful. But there were some concerns regarding the impacts of on-street parking and disability for vehicles turning into and out of Norwood Street, off Kirk Street. TRC did review this. Currently, there's no parking lot on east side of Norwood Street from the intersection of Kirk Street to Park Millie Street. TRC recommended additional no parking signage installed in that area. And this is one that I am recommending that we have. Susan, do you want to?
Yes.
Take a recommendation from the board on each one? Or do you want to?
Why don't we just quickly rule on, on each as we go through while it's fresh in our minds? So, you know, I would, I would support your, the recommendation of the committee to go ahead and have a public hearing on this.
I'll work with you. The next one was at the intersection of Calumet Road and Fletcher Street. There was a request to install, do not block intersection signage and pavement markings. The TRC does not recommend installation of signage, pavement markings in accordance with the policy that T-TAC issued in April of 2019 that was not in favor of that type of pavement markings. Unless there's any concerns by the board, that, that would be our recommendation.
So we're getting some more interference again. Anyone, anyone have any questions on this one?
Yeah, Beth, this is Amy. I just, on this one, I, I understand the concern there because when people are coming off of Calumet onto Fletcher and trying to turn left to go towards cemetery, for instance, oftentimes the light at Church gets pretty backed up. So I don't, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't put that sign in there. I don't know what the policy by T-TAC in April 2019 was all about, but I'm just, I, I would think that that would actually help alleviate some of the backup traffic.
Yeah, so I'm, the board, the SLIF board did approve the policy, the T-TAC policy that basically set a cap with all these types of markings. I agree, it's on basis of market. So I'm happy to bring this back. Again, I can back on the 13th, talk through the next set of issues and I can do that policy.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we listen and prioritize based on what you think. We can continue.
So the next one was at the intersection of Main Street at South Gateway. The request was for signal at the Lucy crosswalk. I think TRC probably just. Beacon, curb bump out, I think that. Make sure it is a very high-speed area and would be helpful to, you know, to really be able to highlight that crosswalk. Obviously, this would be a capital request of which I have had, had many that I submitted this year for traffic-related elements. One of the, one of the capital requests was to look at doing a, a townwide master plan for traffic, pedestrian safety. And I think that this, this would be something that we can. So there's no.
Yep, that makes sense to. Yeah, I was going to say that makes sense to fold that into a townwide plan that is a busy stretch of Main Street and not very pedestrian-friendly. So a crosswalk, there would be a good idea.
So the next one is pretty similar. This is Highland Ave at Lincoln Street Extension. There was a request for a rapid flash beacon at that existing crosswalk. The police chief at the time noted that there was no cross from part of this location that looking more directly to the South Porter Road intersection where there is a crossing bar and a fully actual activated pedestrian signal. So we did not recommend RFP there, but I do think, again, this is maybe something that could be looked.
Okay, and, and maybe something to work with safe routes to school to make sure everyone understands what the safest route is as they're walking.
So the next one was George Road. There is concern about the volume, the volume and speed of traffic on George Road. They're requesting a place bump out, beep on. We did do traffic counts back in April 2019 and the data showed relatively low volume and the 85% speed was about 25 miles per hour. I'm, I did look at police school.
Any questions, anyone? Guess not.
The next one is one that, again, we're recommending a public hearing on. This is the intersection of Jefferson at Lawson Road. If anybody's been to that intersection, it's very confusing. Basically, two equally sized streets that intersect with, you know, stop signs. A request for a stop sign either on Jefferson Road or on Lawson Road. TRC recommended installation of stop signs on Lawson Road, so we made.
So your recommendation is to have a, a public hearing?
Yep.
I'd be inclined to go along with your recommendation.
The next one is very similar to the first one towards the top, which again was just talking about Park Ave. So just again, to highlight this. Can be helped by some improvements that were proposed. The next one here is Lower Forest Street. This is an area that we've talked about many times over the years. The residents were concerned about the traffic volume, speed, traffic, or pedestrian visibility. And they requested do not compliant. And it just all, give that change is out there. We did do pretty significant improvements in that area in 2017 as a result of some funding we got from the streets. And we did conduct traffic counts in 2019 with very heavy volume at the 85% speed at 30 miles. So I don't think there's really any easy solution for that lower forest, lower forest street neighborhood. But again, this is an area that we may want to highlight.
I don't see any hands for any questions? So we're on to the next one.
Almost there. Onto the second page.
Yep.
Okay, Calumet Road at Budger Ave. So this is one that we had some pretty significant concerns about before the pandemic. There were residents were concerned about the volume and speed of traffic on Budger, particularly in the morning. And they noted that the drivers do not stop at the stop signs in that area. The police department agreed with us and they noted that they had increased enforcement in that area. So this is back in June of 2019. And that they'd issued numerous tickets for non-compliant stop signs. DPW did improve the painting in the crosswalk, stop bars in that area. But I do think this is a location where we would want to consider, you know, either create intersection or some additional traffic calming measures out there because people aren't compliant. And as we, we come out of COVID and we see people getting back to meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if this is another one where the, you know, just check the condition of the paint after significant lapse of time might be a good idea?
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have. So item 11, we've had concerns in this, this, this one is from June 2019. But this is our repeat offender in terms of letters of God of the year of the safety at the crosswalk on Washington Street at Lerner Field. Anybody who's traffic is off or software there or across, whoever knows. In the outside areas right at the crosswalk. So we, we do recommend the installation of bump out and a rapid flash beacon at this location. I did actually put in a capital request this year for the design and construction. I'm not sure if it will get funded, but I do hope this is one that moves up the priority list.
Okay, so that, that one's going on the capital list, we hope? Okay.
So item 12, intersection of Screw Street at Oak Street and then Oak Street at Highland. Excuse me, Holland Street. This is the area between Swan Street and Manchester High School. There's a lot of traffic that goes through here. The person who wrote in in June of 2019 was concerned about vehicles dropping off behind Manchester High School and students walking through there. They did request four-way stop at the intersection of First Street. First at Oak Street. So this one is, it's probably a little bit easier if we look at the map. But overall, I think we felt there's an existing stop sign at Oak Street where intersection with First Street. The west side of Oak Street has very few homes and no traffic. So I don't think it makes sense to make that intersection a four-way stop. But we did, TRC did recommend a four-way stop at the intersection of Oak Street and Holland Street, which is fairly equal traffic. This again is one that we recommend.
Yeah, I would, I would go along with your recommendation. You've studied it.
The next one is First Street at Swan Street. So just in the same neighborhood. Folks were concerned about the speed of vehicles returned from Swan Street on Screw Street. It is a very wide intersection. And they were requesting a three-way stop on Long Street. And in Island, that's Screw Street, it would be crossing distance. The intersection would not need a warrant for three-way stop. But we do agree that in Island, for each of the three days out there, this, this would be a future.
That makes sense. It's around the high school.
And then the last one on the list for tonight was Cutting Street. So this is one that actually came forward. Again, this is from October 2019. So we're still living in a COVID, non-COVID world when this recommendation came through. But this was from parts of Bachelor's Safety Officer who was recommending the installation of no parking signage on the west side of Cutting Street. He noted that during large events at Manchester Field, cars were parked at both sides of the street. Making it difficult for our. TRC did agree with this recommendation and recommended. So again, I'm not sure, you know, if we'll be back again this fall to having large events at Manchester Field. But this.
Yeah, I think, you know, that area near Manchester Field does have to manage a lot of, you know, parking and these large events. So I don't see a reason not to go along with your recommendation for having a public hearing. Okay, anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Beth, and thank you, everyone, for your patience with this. We are kind of trying to clear up a backlog of these smaller items. And these are things that people have cared enough to, cared enough about to bring forward and have gone through the process that we set up. And we need to go forward with implementing some of these recommendations. Thank you, Beth. I wanted to just hop backwards since we're just talking about traffic and construction projects. We had instituted a new idea of having people report back, board members report back on their other committee that they attend. And, and Mike was going to give us an update on the capital planning committee. I think some of these things that he's going to update us on involve. I think some of these things that he's going to update us on involve traffic as well. You ready to do that?
Thanks, Susan. Happy to jump in. And Mark and I had talked about putting a memo together for the board, which is in the packet with some of the information that we have so far. As you know, the capital process starts really picking up over the summertime. We ask for departments to identify their capital priorities for the year, and then we go through a presentation process and then a ranking process. And what comes out of those rankings will eventually end up at town meeting for approval. So we're still kind of midway through hearing from departments, but as you can see, bridges and transportation are what we've been kind of looking at so far. And there are repairs to the Washington Street Bridge and Cross Street Bridge that are on the top of the priority list. And then again, a lot of traffic and transportation related issues. I think the board over the past few years has, as you saw from our previous discussion with Beth, we've really picked up on addressing the problems with high traffic and the safety in many of the the walkable areas that we have around town. So and I think having take questions on any of these, as Beth noted, the rapid flashing beacon at Leonard, as well as the bump outs are part of her request, but there's a lot of requests coming from engineering on on these kind of smaller traffic projects. The good thing is when you look at those numbers is most of them are for design and construction. So it's a policy of the capital planning committee to really identify projects that are important, but also not just fund studies without identifying where the construction dollars are coming from. So these projects here, for the most part, are designed in construction, so they're, you know, certainly priorities. We also have heard from the Disability Access Commission as well. And it's probably time that the board discusses increasing our regular capital investment in some of the backlogs of our disability projects that we have. So we have kind of larger projects, like we're doing the elevator at Parkhurst to make that, those classrooms there available to students as enrollment increases. And that's in excess of a million dollars, that project there. But that doesn't necessarily address the backlog of our regular needs on the disability side in our in our buildings that that we've identified through a large study that we completed a couple of years ago now. So even in our newer buildings, there's still work that needs to be done to address access issues there. So the board, I think back in 2010, had committed to $125,000 a year for these projects. It's, I think, part of the discussion we've been having, the capital planning committee, that it's not necessarily enough. So I think they're looking for some direction from the board and some pathway forward to for us to make a a longer commitment to really addressing that backlog there as well, because, you know, we're 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 a little bit behind in taking care of some of our projects. So we've also heard from police and fire, and they've submitted requests. We're trying to resolve the kind of ongoing issue with our communication system there that seems to be sticking around. And hopefully, we can resolve that to have have things moving forward there as well. The capital committee's been steadily investing in replacement and changes to that that system over the past few years. So so that that's where we are. We still have other departments coming to present every, almost every Wednesday night. So if anybody would like to attend, it's a, it's quite a party. So we have a good time. So happy to answer any questions about any of the projects or any priorities that the board sees there that they feel that we should advocate for or elevate for any reason.
Anyone on the board have any thoughts? On this memo? I do have one. Something caught my eye about a townwide plan that I think T-TAC has been talking about and seems like town management is also talking about and sort of having something as a program in mind. So that somebody moving through the town on a bike or driving, you know, sort of sees the same kind of signage all the way through and and it becomes more coherent and more safe. And I certainly support that idea. That's one of the, is that one of the things that capital is looking at?
Yeah, and I think that, I don't see Beth here anymore, but I think that we're, you know, fully supportive of that. I know T-TAC is as well. It, as we're doing all these projects, it's the conversation of connecting the dots and to to figure out how to have it be a a really successful multimodal transportation plan for the for the town center. So we're not just, you know, chasing problems as they as they go. So we try to coordinate it and also it's a priority of us to coordinate a lot of these projects with Jay Gill and the D P W. So we're we're kind of in sync that way. So and that's that's how we've been doing it over the years. And Jay and his department has been very active as well. So we we will be looking at some transfer station improvements as well, as everyone knows, coming back to to fall town meeting. So just want to mention that last piece.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone have any questions? Well, stay tuned to the capital planning process. You know, it's it takes place during the summer and not something people are naturally aware of or have been aware of, but it is important and a component of the whole cycle because it then feeds into fall town meeting. All right. So moving back to our business agenda, the conservation, the Verizon Cable TV item is going to be deferred until next meeting. And the Conservation Commission has a presentation about the town forest. I think David Miller is here, I believe. David, are you here? Oh, there it is. David, are you muted or something? I can't hear anything. Is it me?
I can't hear either.
How about now?
Yes, much better.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Hi, so I'm David Miller and I'm here with Zeke Nims, who's the chair of the Conservation Commission. And what we're looking to do this evening is provide a little bit of a general update as to the Conservation Commission's increased focus on conservation spaces, moving away a little bit from purely wetlands protection act type activities. And we're giving you some examples of that. And by way of a rather specific approach to this increased focus, we're coming to you with a proposal as regards the the town forest, which Zeke will be giving you a fair bit of detail on. As example, the more general approach, the Conservation Commission is going to be, this is in conjunction with the town forest discussion, expanding not from board member perspective, but in terms of what we call associates and land stewards in particular to assist us in overseeing the conservation spaces. And then we have a couple, but it actually turns out to be one update as well that you'll find, I believe, interesting as it pertains to what the Conservation Commission is up to. Zeke wanted to walk through this rather gritty slide, but I think all important points.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for your time tonight. I assume you can hear me. Can I get a ping back on that?
Yes, thank you, Zeke.
Excellent. Thanks. So the Conservation Commission is enabled by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty from nineteen fifty-seven. And our responsibility is explicitly to protect and promote natural resources, conservation space, and access to those open spaces. And in the next paragraph below that, it references the fact that most of our board is burdened by notices of intent for projects within wetland delineation. And we're not Dry Ledge Massachusetts. We used to be called Waterfield. So we are burdened heavily by these notices of intent and other procedural efforts. However, we're really trying to move our effort to promote natural resources and open access to the top of our agenda. And we're physically doing that in our biweekly meetings. We're trying to promote the concept of access as well as education in how the public, especially residents of Winchester, can appreciate the natural spaces that we have. To that end, we have hired an Audubon Ecologic Extension Service to all of the open spaces that are in Winchester. And to clarify, at the bottom of the slide, we've defined conservation spaces different from open spaces because we're not including the parks and open playing fields, but we're specifically speaking about the conservation areas in our town. In the future, we're trying to promote public access, but we're also realizing that we have not necessarily held up to that charge from M G L Chapter forty. And we're trying to revigorate or reinvigorate our efforts to promote the open spaces that are within our jurisdiction and within the town. If you can go to the next slide. Our conservation spaces in town are mostly located on the west-hand side. Lock Farm, Smith Pond, and Mount Pixie are relatively large. Sucker Brook and Saginaw Swamp probably are not as well visited. However, you can notice if you click to the next, there are a few other opportunities in our town, including Winning Farm in the in the west side, which is twenty-six acres of land that has been recently acquired from the large development and is still within our jurisdiction. And what we're talking about today, a relatively large piece of land, the town forest, which is underappreciated and unders supported as well. We've recently, thank you, Susan and everyone else, negotiated or potentially negotiated an acquisition of sixteen acres in the northeast part of town, which extends a significant riparian corridor along through to Davidson Park. So this is seventy-plus acres, potentially with of open space that is preserved and conserved in our town. And that's a significant amount considering we're ten miles north of Boston. That doesn't also consider our extra support that we've had for the joint between Lock Farm and Wright Lock Farm, supporting that preservation of somewhere around ten acres of privately owned land, which is now under a conservation restriction. So the the point of this meeting today is to talk specifically about the town forest. And maybe we can click to the next. Next slide. Yeah, thanks. So Town Forest was bought by the town in nineteen forty-one. And that was a long time before the Conservation Commission's even existed. It's really well preserved. It's a relatively old growth forest in the center of it, as well as having some some wetlands that are butts parts of Medford, which are also well protected. In the next few slides, we'll describe a few of the issues associated with butters that are encroaching upon that land, which has a very well-defined border of a rock wall from the eighteen hundreds. However, we've got to acknowledge that the D P W has done significant work to maintain some of the trails and does a lot of effort or provides a lot of effort to maintain the trees that also fall onto some of the neighbors' properties. What we're proposing today is that because of this lack of care, we're proposing that the town forest be placed under the jurisdiction of CONCOM and that it becomes one of the conservation spaces in town. And thus managed as such. So and let me just describe a few words about what we mean by managed. Our major effort in the next few years, considering there, we may be able to sway everyone's opinion that there may be a little bit of climate change occurring, is to reinvigorate some of the forested areas to make them more resilient to climate change. And that also includes, because we have increasing population pressure, allowing for the habitat for the other animals that live in this area, not just humans, to actually have more healthy areas that they can exist. And that includes plant supplemental plantings and other invigorating efforts to revitalize not only the riparian areas, but also the conservation spaces that are not necessarily wetland-related. In the next few slides, I think we're going to show a few examples of some of the ingressions on the borders of the town land. And Dave, if you can click. So here we have a neighbor who's obviously maintaining beyond, you can see kind of in the middle of that photo, a big, large rock wall buffering between the trees and the property. These people are maintaining a yard beyond the borders and without any real checks or balances. And in the next few slides, you'll see similar cases where neighbors are taking some liberties, if I may, to extend their property and influence into town-owned land. And maybe, Dave, you can just click through a few of these slides on your own. The the D P W has done significant efforts to maintain some of the trees, however, that are leaning over those properties. However, these few slides are just examples of beyond the rock wall, people in town that are butters to the town forest that are taking liberties that in other parks or other recreation spaces in town would would not be necessarily allowed. I'm not trying to pitch this in any way that we're trying to use a stick, but instead the carrot to enable all of the members of town to really try to engage town forest in a better way so that we all know it's a commonly owned property. I just saw Dave Miller disappear and the presentation died. Do you all see that as well?
He's not on at all.
Okay, thanks, Patty. All right, well, we're going to wait until he gets back on. We have forwarded those slides to you before, and I assume that you guys have reviewed those slides, so I'll just keep going.
Yeah, go ahead. We have, we have got them in the packet. Go ahead.
Thanks. So Town Forest existed prior to Conservation Commissions. And Town Forest Committees can be given over to Conservation Commissions. So the the law very clearly states that the select board has that ability, but it does require a vote at town meeting. We have been in good communication with D P W. And the key piece here is that I think that we'd like to be the buffer in between otherwise very well-intentioned town employees and residents, which, you know, everyone can understand, there's there may be some arguments when it comes to land disputes or property management. So our our goal here and our ask here is to propose that this transfer be placed on an article of town in town meeting as a town meeting warrant. That's the main goal for this project. Or for what we're asking. Future and or in the future, also, we we'd like to establish some associates. Right now, there are two town meeting or, excuse me, Town Forest members or, and they've written all of you guys an email describing explicitly. Dave, are you back? Dave Miller, it looks like you're back.
I I think this might be Lisa with the slides, but go ahead.
Okay, cool. Great. Sorry. So the key ask is to ask you guys to propose or to support a warrant in town meeting to transfer the responsibility of stewardship of the town forest to the Conservation Commission. We believe that that really does fit in line with all of our other stewardship responsibilities. We have a budget that extends explicitly for those type of efforts, and it is really within our stream of conscience for what we plan on doing in the next few years. I've been chair for something around five years on the board for eight, and I have yet to see proactive efforts more than reactionary efforts. And I think this is a great example of why we should be proactive, not only for ingressions, but just because of the great opportunity that Town Forest presents. The slide in front of us describes explicitly the associates and their roles.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Oh, there's David.
Hi, Dave. You're back. Perfect timing.
I don't know what happened, but it fixed itself at exactly the right moment. So I was able to, I was able to hear a fair bit of what's.
I was able to hear a fair bit of what Zeke said, and he did summarize it nicely. The one thing we did not touch on was. The desire to have the Select Board support us in this. Transition of Town Forest Management from the Town Forest Committee. The Conservation Commission. And we didn't have a chance to go specifically through that state law. But what it says is that there is a mechanism for that to happen. That mechanism involves town meeting voting for the transfer. And so. Communication with our town council, what they thought was appropriate, was a proposal from the Select Board. Which says, a motion for the Select Board, which says, request, as you say, Town Council and. Mark Too Good, Assistant Town Manager, to draft a article for Fall Town Meeting for this to happen.
Right, as I, as I understand it. You know, the Select Board doesn't have the authority to do this. Town Meeting does, but Select Board is the body that puts things on to the the warrant for town meeting. So you're asking us to place of an article on the warrant that would. Designate the Conservation Commission. As the entity that would, I think it's manage and protect or. Manage and care for the Town Forest. And that the the Town Forest Committee essentially be merged into. The Conservation Commission, that the functions of the Town Forest Committee would be transferred to the Conservation Commission.
Correct, correct. And and the Town Forest would essentially become a conservation space like the other five conservation spaces that Zeke described. Yes.
And I'd like to have this be a conversation and a discussion and maybe to reveal points that maybe we haven't considered. From the other Select Board member. So let's, if you have ideas, please let's discuss that. That's not necessarily meant to be a direct ask without discussion.
Right, I was, I was, I was planning to open it up to the Conservation, to the other members to ask you guys directly. Just wanted to clarify what the the ask was. So does anyone have any questions or thoughts?
So, I mean, my comment is, I think this this makes sense. The. Town Forest Committee also requested that this happen. The Conservation Commission has, you know, statutory enforcement. Over conservation land. Which. Here appears to be necessary at least some, so I I think it makes sense. And I mean, given the history, it's not under the Conservation Commission, just because Conservation Commissions didn't exist then, but now that they do, I think it. Makes sense, and I would support the Select Board sponsoring a, an article at Fall Town Meeting.
Anyone else? Rich? Mike? Amy?
Yeah, I'm in support of this too. I guess my question is. When you talk about the care of the conservation space versus what's happened at the Town Forest, can you just talk a little bit about what sort of maintenance or or work needs to be done? That can be done now if if we were to do this transfer?
I'll take that. And I'm going to give credit explicitly to DPWs for the Town Forest. They've done a reasonably great job. Managing trees encroaching on other people's property as well as maintaining trees blocking or clearing trees when they block the major paths or access. However, that does not necessarily describe the revitalization and replanting of species that are beneficial to habitat. As well as for the beautification of the land for the residents of the town. There's also a significant lack of knowledge about that there's even a Town Forest. And most pointedly or poignantly, both. The educational groups for schools, they take their students into the fells, which isn't necessarily part of Winchester, which is. Just kind of ridiculous that there's certain part, that there's groups that don't educate townspeople within our own town and into a resource that is underutilized. So it's all about also education and exposure to the fact that we have a great resource that is underutilized. Amy, did that answer what you meant? Can I, can I color that in further in a way that would help you?
Yeah, no, I think that's right. I mean, I guess my question, so DPW has been, has been taking care of the Town Forest to date. So if it goes, it falls under Conservation Commission. That would continue, but it would be through your directives to sort of work with them.
Yeah, that's a great, you're, you know, just read between the lines. There's a lot of. Ships in the night type of work between the CONCOM and DPW. We trust and help and appreciate. All of their efforts when they do support. However, there are some sensitive touch things that I think are better. Suited to people that are knowledgeable about wetland impacts, wetland resources, and that there is a wetland area within the town. We do continue and the DPW is supportive of their continued efforts in the Town Forest to maintain the status quo. However. To be frank, I think that the the mid, the problem and the sticky point is between negotiations of the individual neighbors. And without feeling like it's just the towns DPW having to butt heads with resilient neighbors. CONCOMs don't usually have a trouble with that kind of interaction, and and I've got no problem with that either.
Okay, thanks.
Rich, anything else?
No, I. Has has staff or DPW been consulted on this and are they in favor of this? And I guess does legal need to be consulted at all, just in terms of. Right, you know.
Good questions.
Obviously, good questions. With regard to legal, they've been brought along through this entire process. They've seen that draft, that draft law, but the MGL. That pertains to this. They've, we've discussed with them how the transfer might occur. So and then we discussed with them the language that might go into this proposal that we could vote for this evening. You could vote for this evening. With regard to DPW, yes, Zeke and I have spoken to them quite extensively about this issue. In part driven by their being brought into dealing with Town Forest matters such as. Dear DPW, will you cut this tree down for us? And if DPW doesn't really know to go where to go with that kind of question. And they're making judgment calls over the last few years, and they would just soon get out of that role. So they're supportive as well. We've talked to Jay Gill and is it Mike Wise? Mike Wise, both on this matter.
Thank you.
And Susan, if I may, just signal my support for this, for town meeting or an article. It's certainly necessary. I appreciate all the work that the Conservation Commission has done on this. Habitat restoration is certainly a benefit to further engagement there and. Preservation of the Town Forest and, you know, also the issues that you brought up around encroachment too. So I think the more vigilant we can be, the better real community resource it'll be. So thank you again for bringing this in front of us.
I think I'm ready for a motion then.
Okay, so I move that we place an article on the warrant for Fall Town Meeting to transfer the Town Forest. To the Charter of the Conservation Commission to manage and care for the Town Forest of Winchester.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, guys, for all the groundwork you did on this, and I think this is an important and really positive step. I I hope that Town Meeting agrees.
Thank you so much. We do have one more thing we want to bring to your attention.
Zeke, go ahead.
Yeah, so we had some slides at the, as an addendum to that slide deck, specifically calling out six twenty Washington Street, which is the Cancer Center. Just north of the river on the border of Woburn. They own about a four or five acre plot. That is towards town across the river. And it is a currently forested area, and we've approached the hospital explicitly, Rick Weiner, the CEO. And to possibly donate that land to the town under our care as, or then continue to hold the land under a conservation restriction. With the goal. Enabling a contiguous riparian corridor from our negotiated sixteen acres. Site associated with the Vale property and contiguous to Davidson Park. This lot in its current status with the flood plain and its developable land is. Not exactly, you know, right on the front plate. It's not going to get developed immediately. However, our concern, of course, is that, as I said, we're very close to Boston and green space continues to be. Less and less available or more rare, however you want to pitch it. We currently are in communication with the hospital and we are preparing descriptive slide decks about what our plans would be with that property. If and when either a conservation restriction or a deed transfer could occur. It's on the last slides of that deck, whoever's driving.
Last slide I thought.
So Patty, if you're the one driving, it's like the third and last slides on the deck.
And so this is.
So. Yes, exactly. And it would enable a contiguous extension of Davidson Park, which is, you know, it is a town park and, but it is truly much more of a. Habitat centric park compared to, let's say, Leonard Field or Lynch. And so this would just be an obvious continuation of that land. And then you can imagine deer running across Washington in the middle of the night. They do actually go across. This would just be a contiguous extension of that land that we've just been able to preserve and protect at part of the Vale property. So this is more of an FYI for your board. However, Rick Weiner, the CEO of Leahy Health, is more than willing to reveal that to you guys. And to just let you know that that is the state of our deliberations, that we have asked them for this donation or protection. And he's at the point where he's speaking to the Board of Directors of Leahy Health. We're telling you that just so that maybe we can think, hear your, bounce it off as a soundboard for you. And maybe give my, your opinions about what that could possibly mean for the town or your perspectives. And so that floor is up to you again.
Well, I, you know, since I was involved in the Vale negotiations, this seems like a natural kind of extension of that or a bridge between that sixteen acres on one side of. Washington into the area near Davidson Park. It is wooded, and I think it would be, it'd be great if the hospital saw fit to donate that. I think we would have to run that by legal, talk about, you know, any kind of environmental contamination. I don't know. You know, chances are that, you know, there's, there's something, but it, you know, it may be minimal. So, yeah, I would be, that's an intriguing idea, and thank you for starting it. I think that's great. Anyone else? The hour grows late, so maybe, maybe if it had been earlier in the evening, we'd have more, we'd be more energetic about this.
It's just an FYI anyway.
Yep, but thank you for putting that on the, on our radar.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. And thanks for your patience. So working down the agenda, the next item I see is the Waterfield Lot Financial Consultant. And I'm pretty sure Mark Too Good has had to leave. This, as you, you've got some materials earlier in the day. This is a third party independent. Financial consultant who is experienced with. Affordable multi-unit developments and various kinds of. You know, governmental subsidies and how the funding works for developing that type of property to come in and analyze. The Waterfield numbers in the context of the other development proposals to. Need at least twice with the task force to assist them in understanding the general way that. Affordable housing finance works and then also to. Understand the civil proposal and evaluate whether it's. You know, financially viable, evaluate whether, you know, how it could perhaps be more advantageous to the town. Assist them in their work in prioritizing the items for negotiation further. And realizing that we needed to have that person on board fairly quickly to get the task force up and running. The town staff did go ahead and put out a request. That went out to a number, I think, four potential qualified consultants, and we got back one response. That one is from Lynn Sweet, who has. Worked in this area for a long time. And we are seeking. A reserve fund transfer from INCOM to pay the fee for this, because this is not something that we had in our budget. Not something we anticipated. It was made. Really made necessary by the referendum vote and for the task force. So we're looking for the the board to sort of weigh in, and we would like to have the board authorize us to go ahead and ask for the reserve fund transfer. And then. If we get that, go ahead and. Negotiate a contract with Lynn Sweet so that we can get started with that work. Any questions? I'm sure Lisa has more information as well, because she was working on this too. So any questions for? On that? Seeing none?
Mike had his hand up, so I was.
Mike is very good about putting his hand up, and I just, I'm never on that screen.
No worries, no worries. Just to comment that I, I think it's a, something that we heard from both sides, just a necessary part of the the process. So, you know, it's. Finding someone that can work at this high level with the task force, I think is is necessary to move the project forward. So it sounds like a good idea to me.
Thank you.
I would agree with Mike on that. In addition, looking at the RFP, I don't know if we want to make Stacy or. You know, a member of the Finance Committee available also to the Waterfield Task Force in case they have. In conjunction with what's being presented by this independent financial analysis. Any questions about the town finances or anything like that? So. I know it looks like there's a bunch of meetings built into the RFP, so I just thought it might be helpful to have Megan or or someone from the Finance Committee at those meetings as well.
I think that's a valid idea. That's good. I think it was a little open ended in the the task force charge, so we could, we could incorporate that as well, right Lisa?
Yeah, so when we go ask for the reserve funds transfer tomorrow night, I'll also put that request out. To see if they want to designate a representative from that committee that can attend meetings.
Amy would be ready for a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve a reserve fund transfer for up to twenty five thousand dollars for a financial analysis for the Waterfield Lot.
Just approving a request right now, not the transfer. Or.
That's correct. It should be a request. So friendly amendment.
Or transfer.
I think I heard a second.
Second.
Okay. So roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And I think there was a second one. A second motion to go ahead, if we get the reserve fund transfer to go ahead and. Move forward the contract with Lynn Sweet.
Okay, so I move that we, we. Depending on the result of the reserve fund transfer. Approve Town Manager to negotiate contracts with Lynn Sweet.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. I think the next item is an update on the racial equity project. And we did discuss this last time. And Amy and I did meet with FEMA, the consultant, on Thursday. And after that conversation, Amy and I would like to propose a different course of action than having them present the final report now and then the contract on August 31st. And FEMA is agreeable with this different idea. Amy and I believe it's really necessary for us as a board to discuss how we, the town, mismanage the social equity project, not FEMA. We should take steps to address the damage and try to rebuild some trust. To do that, we should extend the contract so FEMA can complete the survey that has been discussed and drafted and then have the survey done and at that point present its final report. We, as the board from the beginning, failed to be sensitive to the impact we were having. We failed to be sensitive to the way the term anti-racist would trigger the people in overwhelmingly white organization to feel targeted. And we also failed to be out in front of this as the face of the project, which put our town manager in a stressful position. We failed to set the tone at the outset that we would be taking the survey too and that the whole project would involve all of us learning together, all recognizing that it would be uncomfortable at times, but in the long run would be the right thing and a beneficial thing to do. But we believe that all of us in town government have more to learn about diversity, equity and inclusion in our own organization. We need to do more to understand that we all have unconscious biases. We need to work on how to talk more openly about and do more to counteract racial and gender double standards or inequities or inequalities that do exist and are harmful. So Amy and I think we should work with FEMA to make some changes in the survey draft to make it more clear that it's coming from the select board and that we're also taking it. And then we would, you know, present that at a select board meeting so the community could see, the community could see what it is. Send it out. FEMA would collect the data on a confidential and anonymous basis and then report out the aggregated data to the select board in their final report. So we would essentially complete the project and have the results and have the data that we could use to move forward. Amy, if you have anything to add, please go ahead and I hope we can discuss this and figure this out tonight.
Yeah, no, thanks Susan. That was a good summary of our discussion and I think it's a, it's a, I think the thing that we failed to do in the first place was really to outline what the outcomes we wanted to see. And I think using this opportunity to really get a good baseline and foundation of what, what's happening in town, I think would be a good.
Don't want to miss this.
Eric, I think you're, there you go, okay. Will be a really good, I think we'll have a renewed sense of what we're looking to accomplish. And I think that the other thing Susan that I would suggest is that this obviously for all become, is a voluntary, the survey would be a voluntary thing for people that want to participate and help us get to that, that baseline and really a true understanding of where we are as a town and as an organization.
Yeah, thanks for adding, thanks for adding that.
Sounds good to me. Thank you Susan and Amy for following through with this. Certainly it's a necessary project for the board. I don't know if FEMA needs additional funds from us for, to continue the contract at this point. I'm not sure where we, where we ended up with them, but I know the survey has been kind of evolving over a period of time. So, I'm not sure how we, we move it forward from here. Do we just kind of hand it off to them and they, is it going to be a survey monkey kind of thing? Or, I guess, you know, my preference is we just make it very clear that people's identities are secure and make them feel as comfortable as possible because that's the way that we're going to get the best information. And I think we took this, you know, kind of harder approach rather than just have events where we're educating people on anti-racism and rights supremacy, where we're really looking at ourselves and the kind of structures that are in place in our local government and in our community and trying to dissect those a little bit. So I think that the strategy is the right one. So just thank you for bringing this forward and happy to support your recommendation.
Thank you, Mike. Amy, it was my understanding when we were speaking with FEMA that they didn't need additional funding, that this was just extending the time to complete the contract.
Yeah, I think we talked about extending through the end of this year.
Right, to the end of the year. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think it makes sense. Everything I've seen from FEMA has been very high-quality work. So I think that they are very qualified to do, to continue to do this work. And I know that it's been delayed, not because of, not because of them. And just reviewing the draft of the survey, it's, again, I'm very happy with the work that FEMA has been doing and I fully support extending their contract to December 31st, 2021.
Yeah, I think Susan and I would absolutely agree with that. And I think that it's, finishing out the scope of work makes a lot of sense. And I think that they, they have, they have great insights already into what, from just the work they've done so far. And I think allowing them to continue and, and release the survey will be, will get us some really great insights as well.
So I guess all we're looking to do is extend the date through December 31st.
So.
Yes?
I guess, you know, I haven't seen FEMA's work. I saw a draft of the survey. I haven't seen any other work. I'm not sure what else is out there. You know, I'm not privy to the conversation you had with Jason last week. You know, I mean, this is a very meaningful project that absolutely we need to do. I just, knowing what I know has gone on, I just have hesitations about moving forward in this direction. You know, I just don't know how comfortable our staff will feel about participating in this project moving forward. So, you know, I'm really torn, to be quite honest with you.
Yeah, I mean, I can see, I am too. I was too. I think what I think this opportunity allows us to do is to recalibrate and to come at, come at it in a different way, making sure that we are being very clear that the board, this is a board decision, this is a board initiative that we feel strongly about and that it's, this is an opportunity to hit the refresh button. And that it's a voluntary process, that if they're not comfortable and they don't want to participate, that is totally fine. I think that that's, that's something I want to be really clear about too. So, I do feel like this is an opportunity for our board to recalibrate and just try to contextualize this and make it more, more straightforward and really share that we feel that this is something that is coming from us and that we're going to participate as well. And it's not something we're pushing down on, on just the staff, appointed officials, select board will be doing it. It's going to be much more widespread than just town staff. So I think that that was an important point to make as well.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I was imagining we would, Amy and I would work on what would be the cover letter that staff would read when they get this and make it much more clear about what our real intent is and how we're involved as well. It's a, you know, and that it's voluntary and anonymous and, and, you know, we'll see if people participate or not. But I want to demystify it, you know, and just make it a little more just transparent and see what we get.
I mean, part of being anti-racist is to actually be willing to be vulnerable, to be willing to understand what impact somebody has on others. And if this can help, which I think this can help, understand people who are open-minded to understand what impact they have on, on people of color in town. I think it would be helpful. And yes, is it, is it comfortable to confront one's own privilege and to confront how one's privilege closes the door to others? Closes the door to opportunities to other, to equal opportunities to others? No, it's not comfortable. But, you know, it's part of growth, personal growth for those who choose to grow as a person, to be able to open up, to be able to learn from that and to maybe, maybe understand what others go through that don't have that privilege. So, again, it's not about blaming anybody for any specific result, but it is about providing the tools to be able to just be unified better as a town and understand the impact that we have on others. That's, that's my view. So I'm on it.
And Mariano, I completely understand that and completely agree with everything you just said. I guess my concern is, you know, as we sit here today, we know that our staff participated willingly in the first phase of this program and eight of them got reported to HR for, you know, conversations they were supposed to be having in a safe environment. And that wasn't right. It just wasn't right. And, you know, here we, and they all know it.
I'm not aware of that. That's, that's news to me, so.
It's the elephant in the room. And here we are now asking our staff, you know, to, you know, re-up and participate in this. And, I mean, I gotta be honest, I'm, I'm sick about this. I mean, I just don't, I just, I just, we have one shot to get this right and I'm just not sure we're, we're there based on everything that's gone on.
I just, I don't understand, like, where's this coming from? That eight people got reported to HR? Like, that's complete news to me. What happened? Were there repercussions? Like, what, who was reported to HR?
I think they, they felt that it was, it was not, the conversation was not kept as confidential as they expected.
Was somebody actually reported to HR?
As far as I know, yes. I was told seven employees reported to HR and then eight on a separate complaint. Come on Susan, you know about this.
I think Rich is.
I don't understand it. Yeah, first of all, if it was supposed to be confidential, I'm, we're talking about it, we're making it worse. And I think there was a lot of secrecy and misunderstanding. And that's why I'm thinking that the way to try to work our way through this is to just demystify what FEMA was trying to do and that we were involved and we were supposed, it was supposed to be all of us involved. It was not supposed to be any particular people. It's supposed to be data about the whole organization. And because it sort of got stopped and became mystified, for lack of a better term, it just created a lot of mistrust. And I want to try to dispel that.
I'd just like to understand, like, where this is coming from because this is the first time I've heard about it. And, like, is this even true?
So, I mean, I don't think this is the right way or the right place for us to be talking about, you know, kind of these, any sort of hearsay complaints. But I think there's value in a level, defining a level of comfort for our staff and community stakeholders. And to Amy's point, this is voluntary. And I think that, you know, we are confident that we come up with a process that if we get information from people, that will tell us something. And if nobody responds to this, that will also tell us something. And we need to, you know, chart a different course in really our commitment to racial justice. So, you know, I just feel uncomfortable with us. We really, I mean, I get where you're coming from, Rich. I think this just isn't the right forum for that. And, you know, I think we just need to move forward with this survey and issuing the survey if it, as long as everybody is clear that it's confidential.
I just want to make it clear that as far as this board is concerned, nobody got reported to HR. Because it is important that we get responses from people. And to say that people got reported to HR when this board knows nothing about it as a board is, is going to discourage people from responding. So, I just want to make it clear that as far as this board knows, nobody got reported to HR, no employee got in trouble for anything to do with the anti-racist project. And to suggest otherwise, it's just, it's not true. Nope, nope. Nobody got reprimanded for anything.
It is true, Mariano. Come on, you can't say that.
Where's the proof? I mean, Lisa, the HR department reports to you, right? Were there, were, was somebody reported to HR?
I'm not aware of it.
So, any employee that supposedly got reported, their manager didn't know about it. So, any employee who's watching this, you didn't get in trouble because your manager didn't know about it.
I mean, Mariano, I just can't let you go on and say this. I mean, I just can't. I mean, it's, it's just not true. I mean, they were reported.
I think this conversation is not helping and I have to ask if we just.
And you know it's true, Mariano. You've seen the report from.
Okay.
Let's just leave it there, please, Rich.
I mean, it's been the elephant in the room for months, guys. And people are, as the, as the Woburn Daily Times said, another one bites the dust. I mean, people are leaving left and right. And it's been the elephant in the room and this board refuses to address the toxic environment that is in Town Hall right now.
Well.
But is it due to this, to this project? That there's a toxic environment? That's what I don't understand. How is it that, looking at the impact that we have on, on inclusion for everybody, how is that a toxic environment?
I think we need to just leave this here. I really do because this is involving people who aren't on this call, people who work for us. And yes, we need to work on the environment and the climate. That was something I was thinking we would do. Do something along the lines of the schools, you know, have a climate survey. Where we are right now is not a good place. Amy and I were thinking that at least demystifying what we had in mind and what we were really trying to do would help. This, this conversation is not helping.
I think the public has a right to know, Susan.
I think that this conversation needs to end. So.
I mean, honest, I agree with Rich. I think the public has a right to know.
Yeah, I want, I just don't want to, I, I still fear doing the wrong thing. I just really do. I just don't want to make this worse. And I want to apologize to everybody who feels badly about this. We really had good intentions. Obviously, we didn't know what we were doing. And as I said, we didn't know the impact we were having. So, let's just leave it there and I guess bring it back at the next meeting if legal counsel thinks there's merit to doing that or help, if we decide. at the next meeting if legal counsel thinks there's, there's merit to doing that or help if we, if we decide that if, if the advice of counsel is to go ahead or not. Maybe the advice of counsel is not to go ahead. So that brings us to the next item, which is the town manager. And we received, the board received the resignation this morning of town manager Lisa Wong. He's leaving to take an opportunity at South Hadley to be town administrator there. Although it's very disheartening that, that Lisa is leaving before completing her contract here. As she put in her letter, this is something that would be an opportunity for her and better on the, allow her work-life balance. It seems like South Hadley is a place out in Western Mass where she got her start as a, in her professional career, where she has extended family. So as she said in her, in her letter, you know, I shared the pride and sense of accomplishment and the things that we were able to do together here in Winchester. And you know, we wish Lisa Wong the very best for the future in, in South Hadley. She said that her last day will be October 31st, which will take us through the month of October. So I'm thinking that if Lisa wants to say anything, Lisa, feel free. But if you don't, we could just move on as a board to discussing how we are going to need most likely an interim town manager so that we can then do a full-fledged search for a new town manager. And it's, it's with a real heavy heart that, that we're, you know, looking at this. But, you know, we have a town, a town to run and services to provide. And school will be starting and, and we just have to be able to function and keep the wheels on the bus in the best interest of the town. So I guess we'll have to convene in a, a special meeting as, as a board to discuss this further, given the lateness of the hour. A, a plan for an interim superintendent or perhaps there's some sort of internal candidate or candidates that we could rely on in the interim so that, you know, you do, do a good search with a consultant to find a permanent town manager. Anyone have anything to say? I think we still have a consent agenda. Go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, one thing that I would say is if we can, if everybody agrees, if we can reach out to Sam Allison and Tom Howley, who led the previous search committee, town manager search committee. And see if they're, if they're willing to do so again and then we can come back and establish a search committee at a, at a future meeting, but I think we should move quickly on that. That way they can start working on that.
That, you know, I would, I, I, yeah, I've never, I've never been involved in a, a town manager search. I have been involved in a superintendent search. I think they're sort of functionally equivalent. And yes, we would need a good search committee and I I don't think that, I don't think we're in the good place to really discuss it further tonight. It's just late. Thank you, Mariano. I know you, you worked on the previous one, so thank you for your input.
I'll just say that I, I just wanted, Lisa, and I know we'll probably see you, see you again before October 31st, but I just wanted to acknowledge that that we wish you the best and as a board, I'm sure, and best of luck in South Hadley and, you know, certainly family is everything. And so I'm, I'm happy that you've been able to find a position where it'll be a little easier for you to see your precious little girl and your family. So best of luck.
Thanks, Amy. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Patty, is there anything that I left out? And God bless you, and God bless you for being there.
Did we actually have a vote on extending FEMA's contract?
No, you did not.
Okay.
No.
We can do, I mean, we can do that just to, to give the board a little bit more time to discuss.
Because you, you had extended it to August 31st.
Right.
Yep, we can discuss it on the 23rd.
Okay, so no motion now?
No, go for it.
Okay. I move that we extend the contract with FEMA to end December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
I abstain for the reasons I stated before.
Amy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thanks, everyone.
All right, I move that we adjourn.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Can I call everyone? I'm sorry.
Mariano.
Mariano.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thank you all.
Sarah.
Good night.